Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to our annual perfect attendance reception. Mr. Clanton will be working with that program shortly at the microphone, but before we begin, we're going to have some entertainment. This is the opening night for our 2012 cultural season. We have a very eclectic group of entertainers for you tonight, but they are all from our talented arts program, which is coordinated by Debbie LaFleur and her assistant, Ms. Donald Laurent, who will be directing from the wings tonight. So Ms. Laurent, if you will get our group first act ready. It is Bethany Prince. She is from Mandeville High School. She will be playing the concerto for violin in G major. Her talented arts teacher is Ms. Leslie Loyacano, who will be accompanying her on the piano. Let's welcome Bethany. The next act will be Covington High School students, tap theater students, and they will be doing a scene from a play that is going to be produced later this month. And I'm going to ask their teacher, talented theater teacher, Mr. Gary Mendoza, to come say a few words about this play because it's very near and dear to his heart. He is the playwright. Mr. Mendoza.
Good evening and thank you very much. As Ms. Sharp said, I am the playwright. I have been a talented theater teacher at Covington High. This is my eighth year. And no, I did not graduate from there. Other side of the parish curve, a high class of ninety-three represent. So when I started writing this project a few years ago, I had to approach it from somebody that did not go there, but I'm writing about a hundred years of history at this school. Turns out it was actually very easy to do because anybody that knows anything or two about Covington High, there's a lot of history there. There's a lot of tradition and there was a lot of stuff to choose from. We actually previewed this scene. This is the opening scene from the show. We previewed this scene last year at Covington High's main event, and the reception was wonderful. A lot of parents that came and seen it and students, seniors that were graduating, said they definitely wanted to return this year to actually see the finished product. And I am happy to report that the finished product, of which I brought a display publicity, What Fire Could Never Burn opens in two weeks. It is Tuesday, September twenty-fifth, and we run twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-ninth. I do not compete with Friday Night Football. So I highly encourage everybody to come see it. The students have done an outstanding job, and obviously, we didn't cover everything because that would take, well, a hundred years. But we managed to get a lot in there. I think you're going to be very surprised, very pleased. The title, What Fire Could Never Burn, is, I used the fire from nineteen seventy-four as a jumping off point. I figure it's an iconic thing that happened pretty much right in the middle of the history. What better to use? And we pretty much covered that, but it's more just about the fire. It's about the fire of the students, the fire of the alumni, the fire of the teachers, the fire of the school itself. It's the fire that burns within. Without further ado, I'll give you the Covington High talented theater and music students in What Fire Could Never Burn.
Sunday, October thirteenth, nineteen seventy-four. To most people throughout the world, or for that matter, throughout the state of Louisiana, and perhaps more simply stated, throughout Saint Tammany Parish, it was just another Sunday, just another day off before returning to the routine-ish grind of normalcy at the beginning of a new week. But to the thousands of teachers, students, parents, and employees that have ever traveled the halls of Covington High, including those who occupied it just a few days earlier as part of the school's annual homecoming celebration, or to the many thousands more who have been in some way influenced or affected by this incredible institution of learning, when it comes to being just another day, that Sunday was anything but. The following day, the lead article in the local newspaper delivered a story as thorough and precise as a news story should be. It contained numbers and details, history and speculation, and of course, a quote or two from somebody familiar with the situation that gets paid to sound smarter than everyone else at a time like this. When read by Amy Cominer, it would probably cause someone to glance up at the end and stare off into the middle distance, pondering what it must be like to be affected by such an event before a person who at one point in time, in some shape or form, became a part of the fiber that makes up CHS, it became much more than a news story. The perfectly edited words arranged on the page suddenly became a cacophony of tragic sound, with each poignant phrase sounding like a harsh crescendo the likes Mozart could only dream of.
Covington High School was destroyed by fire.
Was destroyed by fire.
Sunday morning.
The event was witnessed by hundreds of spectators.
Sunday morning.
Spectators gathered in chilly morning air.
See the end of the longtime educational institution.
Covington High School was destroyed by fire.
Fire was at the scene Tuesday morning, sifting through debris.
Spectators were gathering.
On chilly morning air.
Covington High School was destroyed by fire.
Was destroyed by fire.
The blaze was reported at eleven fifty P.M. on Saturday.
The blaze.
The blaze.
The blaze.
Men from the Covington Fire Department were joined by volunteers.
The blaze was reported.
The blaze.
Eight-hour effort to contain the blaze.
Covington High School was destroyed by fire.
The library and cafeteria and shop were saved.
Eight-hour efforts to contain the blaze.
Sunday morning.
Spectators gathered in the chilly morning air.
Officials were led to find an old athletic record book.
The blaze.
Eight-hour effort to contain the blaze.
Were not damaged seriously.
The vaults they were in stood amid the worst of the debris.
Covington High School was destroyed by fire.
Was destroyed by fire.
The building was over fifty years old.
Fifty years old.
Eight-hour effort to contain the blaze.
See the end of the longtime educational institution.
The event was witnessed by hundreds of spectators.
School several generations.
Several generations.
The building was fifty years old.
Destroyed by fire.
Many residents who learned of the fire.
The event was witnessed by hundreds of spectators.
That were sad, I guess they were calling it by fire.
Several generations.
Several generations of Covingtonian.
Men and residents.
Residents were saddened.
Superintendent CJ Shane said that in a way, the timing of the fire was fortunate.
Timing of the fire was fortunate.
Spectators gathered in the chilly morning air.
Seeing how it was a weekend instead of a busy school day.
The blaze was reported at eleven fifty P.M. on Saturday.
Eleven fifty P.M.
Timing of the fire was fortunate.
Eight-hour effort to contain.
There is no telling what may have happened if it had been during the week.
Superintendent.
Timing of the fire was fortunate.
What may have happened?
What may have happened?
There is no way of telling what may have happened.
Sunday morning.
Hundreds of spectators.
Chili morning air.
Multi-educational institution.
The blaze was unfortunate.
Eight-hour effort.
Fifty years old.
Sifting through debris.
Several old yearbooks.
Several generations.
Residents were saddened.
Superintendent.
Timing of the fire.
What may have happened?
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 Covington High School was destroyed by fire.
What fire could burn, it did. What fire could burn were the buildings, the books, the photographs, but the article said the school was destroyed by fire, destroyed and not just burned. But in order to destroy the school, the flames would have had to attack the memories captured in those photographs, the minds shaped by those books, the stories created in those buildings. Those things, however, were untouchable. Those things stared down the flames and dared the fire to keep trying and to do its worst. Those things were in existence before that first clean brick was even laid more than fifty years earlier, and had lasted since the last charred wall was torn down as a result of that incredible night. What fire could burn, it did. What fire could never burn is Covington High.
I know September twenty-fifth, we can see the rest of it. I hope all of you can try to make it one of those nights. It's going to be very exciting. We are ending our program tonight with Mr. Clifton Cooper. He is from Mandeville Junior High School, and he is a Cajun accordionist. His music teacher is Ms. Brenna Fashon, who is with us tonight, and we're going to welcome Clifton at this time. Thank you. I think that might be our first accordion player in the years. Not in the whole history of this building, I'm not saying that, but since we've been doing this lately in the last few years. So we appreciate Clifton. At this time, I'm going to turn the program over to Mr. Brandon Clanton, and he will honor our perfect attendees.
Thank you.
I don't know that I've been on stage. Thanks. Thank you. What a great, great group of kids we have here. Let's give another round to all of these performers. Thank you all very much. Every time we do one of these, I'm always amazed at the talent that we have in our school system, and glad so many people could come out to see that tonight. I also want to take this opportunity to thank our superintendent, Mr. W.L. Trey Foles, and his leadership team, Ms. Arabey, and Mr. Javia, and Mr. Brady. If you all would just kind of stand up and give a little wave, thank you. Appreciate their continued support for these programs and for our main event tonight, which is to honor our employees that have perfect attendance. I'd also like to ask our board members to please stand up. We have our president here, Mr. Jack Loop, Ms. Neil Henigan, Beth Heintz, Mr. Michael Dermon, Charles Harold, I think is in the back, Robin Mullitt, Mr. Willie Jeter, Peggy Sealy, Ms. Rowan Tipton, Ron Bettencourt, Bob Womack, Ronnie Pancks, John Lamarc, Ray Alford, and our board vice president, Ms. Mary Kay Bellisario. This is always a great event tonight. This is our opportunity to congratulate and to celebrate and to honor the employees of the Saint Tammany Parish Public School System who have gone above and beyond in their dedication, in their respect for their job, for the parents, for the students, and for themselves and for our school system, and that is to work the entire year and achieve perfect attendance. Would those people please stand up tonight? Let's give these people a big round of applause. That's quite an accomplishment, and we certainly want you to know how much we appreciate that tonight. In fact, we are going to appreciate that in a five-hundred-dollar sort of a way in just a few minutes. Lisa Newman and Health Management Partners, our Employee Assistance Program, is our sponsor for this always, and Lisa is going to donate five-hundred dollars for that. She would always like to thank our employees, that Employee Assistance Program is always proud to honor the teachers and all of our employees, support staff with these perfect attendance records, and she just wants to use this as a way to show her appreciation and just to say thank you. We're very pleased to present that award tonight, but before we draw, I'm going to ask Ms. Beth Heintz to come forward, and she's going to read the resolution that will be entered into the minutes of the board meeting tonight, and then a copy of this will be sent to all of our people with perfect attendance. Ms. Heintz.
Thank you. It's with great pleasure that I offer this resolution. Whereas the strength of the Saint Tammany Parish School System is determined in large part by the spirit of dedication and perseverance of employees of the system, and whereas exemplary employee attendance is the foundation of a deep-seated professional culture and work ethic, and whereas accountability goes beyond test scores to include a positive work ethic that supports strong academic performance, and whereas employee attendance can be directly linked to increased student achievement and a positive learning environment, and whereas perfect attendance by employees of the school system shows a high degree of commitment in maximizing instructional time and limiting disruptions to learning, and whereas perfect attendance by employees also serves as an example for students that can encourage increased student attendance and positive work habits that will serve students well throughout their life. Now therefore be it resolved, the members of the Saint Tammany Parish School Board acknowledge and appreciate the commitment of all employees within the school system who have perfect attendance on the job and commend them for their outstanding diligence and dedication. Be it further resolved, this resolution will be spread upon the official minutes of the board with a copy being sent to all of our employees having perfect attendance during the 2011-2012 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heintz. Appreciate that very much. At this time, I'd like to ask our superintendent, Mr. Trey Foles, to come forward. He's going to pull the lucky winner tonight. I've been turning them around. I promised about ten people that I would have their name on the top, but before we do that, I do need to say that Ms. Newman was going to try to be here tonight, and she was unable to make it. So I have this beautiful certificate that represents five-hundred dollars that the superintendent will present to the lucky winner, and then as soon as that money comes in, I will come by and present it to you, I hope. You can't. You cannot deposit this. And I think that was pretty appropriate, Mr. Foles, because I think this is John's fourth year with perfect attendance, so great job. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I certainly want to thank you people for your dedication to our system and your jobs, and I want to thank everybody for being here. We are going to have some punching cookies. You may stay for the board meeting, but that's certainly not necessary, but thank you very much and hope to see you all here again next year. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the CJ Shane Complex for the School Board Meeting from September thirteenth, 2012. Ms. Wallace, who have a roll call, please.
Mr. Loop.
Here.
Mr. Henigan. Mrs. Heintz. Mr. Dermon. Mr. Harold. Mrs. Tipton. Mr. Jeter. Mrs. Sealy. Mrs. Mullitt. Mr. Bettencourt. Mr. Womack. Mr. Pancks. Mr. Lamarc. Mr. Alfred. Mrs. Bellisario.
We'll have the invocation pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Heintz, please. Please stand.
Would you please bow your heads with me? Be with our children, teachers, and administrators during this school year. Be with those gathered tonight for our meeting. Help us to listen to one another and make decisions that will reflect good judgment. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Heintz. Board members, any special recognitions tonight? All right, thank you. Special recognitions, perfect attendance recognition, Mr. Brandon Clanton.
Thank you, Ms. Loop.
Good evening, everybody. I certainly hope you had an opportunity to attend our perfect attendance reception and grand prize drawing to honor the employees who had perfect attendance during the 2011-2012 school year. I want to thank Mr. Foles again for his continued support for this program. I want to thank Lisa Newman with Health Management Partners for her continued support and again donating. for her continued support, and again donating $500 for our prize winner. I also want to congratulate John Cannon, I believe is in the back, for our winner tonight. Thank you, John. Congratulations. And I know that we all hope that these employees will serve as role models for our other employees, and it will have many more employees with perfect attendance for the 2012-2013 school year. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Beth Heintz to read the resolution into the minutes commending these employees, a copy of which will be sent to these employees next week.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. It's with great pleasure that I offer this resolution on behalf of the board. Whereas the strength of the St. Tammany Parish School System is determined in large part by the spirit of dedication and perseverance of the employees of the system, and whereas exemplary employee attendance is the foundation of a deep-seated professional culture and work ethic, and whereas accountability goes beyond test scores to include a positive work ethic that supports strong academic performance, and whereas employee attendance can be directly linked to increased student achievement and a positive learning environment, and whereas perfect attendance by employees of the school system shows a high degree of commitment to maximizing instructional time and limiting disruptions to learning, and whereas perfect attendance by employees also serves as an example for students that can encourage increased student attendance and positive work habits that will serve students well through life. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the St. Tammany Parish School Board acknowledge and appreciate the commitment of all employees within the school system who have perfect attendance on the job and commend them for their outstanding diligence and dedication. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of the board with a copy being sent to all employees having perfect attendance during the 2011-2012 school year. And I'd like to make a motion that we accept this resolution.
Unanimous second. Questions by the board? Comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Thank you, Mr. Clayton. United Way Campaign, Mr. Bill Brady.
Thank you very much, Mr. Loop. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, it's my pleasure once again to announce to you that we are kicking off our annual United Way Fund Drive. It began this Tuesday with a very rousing, well-attended kickoff session with our coordinators for our schools and sites. We have set this year the most ambitious goal that we've ever devised. It's $185,000 for the school system to raise. We're certainly hoping that you as a board join with us in helping us to reach our goal. You know, last year, the school system, its employees and its students was the 13th largest contributor to the United Way of the Greater New Orleans Area United Way. And that's pretty doggone good when you consider we are the we were the largest contributor of, I think, any public body that participated in the drive. And that's hundreds, probably hundreds of different groups and organizations that participated. But our children, our teachers, our employees helped us to be the 13th largest contributor to the United Way last year. We certainly appreciate that. We ask that you join with us. We also ask that you help support the United Way as you've always done in the past, and we certainly know that you lead the way. I want to especially thank Mr. Trey Foles for his dedication and his willingness to allow us to do the things that we need to do to make our drives as successful as they are. So, Mr. Foles, a personal thank you for that. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Robin Mullet if she would read a resolution, please.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Whereas the St. Tammany Parish School Board recognizes the contributions made by the United Way to services in St. Tammany Parish through agencies such as the American Red Cross, Boys and Girls Clubs, YMCA, YWCA, St. Tammany Association of Retarded Citizens, East St. Tammany Rainbow Childcare Center, Girl Scout Council, Boy Scouts of America, and Youth Service Bureau, and whereas this board would like to encourage all employees to participate in the 2012 drive through payroll deductions or CAS contributions during the campaign scheduled for September 11th, 2012 through October 12th, 2012. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Tammany Parish School Board does hereby go on record as supporting the United Way drive in the St. Tammany Parish School System. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of the board with a copy being sent to all schools and sites to encourage participation in reaching the United Way goals for this year, and I so move.
Move, unanimous. Second. Questions by the board? Comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Thank you, Mr. Brady. Public comments, five minutes. Ms. Dyer.
Come to the podium, state your name, please. Hi, my name is Kaitlyn Dyer. Just to let you all know a little bit about myself, I am 16 years old. I'm currently a senior in high school. I am homeschooled. I also work full-time, as well as run a Relay for Life team, which is really fun. I'm also going to college in January. And what I'm here to talk to you about today is the expulsion policy that's recently been instated. What it says is basically that anyone who's expelled from high school is now required to attend Jump Start for a full year before being allowed back into the schooling system. A lot of you, after, you know, me going on about myself, wouldn't necessarily think that I was expelled from school, but I was. My freshman year, I was expelled from Lake Shore High School. I made a mistake. It was a really bad mistake, and I knew it at the time, and I know it now. At the time, I went to Jump Start for two weeks after being expelled to finish off my exams, and I don't know if any of you have actually gone to Jump Start before, but it wasn't like any school I've ever been to. It was scary. I've come the closest I've ever come to running away when I was there. I didn't want to go to school. It was a scary place, you know. Kids were, they were mean. It wasn't like normal high school. I know I was offered drugs within my first three hours there, I think twice, my very first day. I didn't take them because that's what I was there for, but it was a scary place, you know. And at the time, I had the choice to either go there, or switch into either going to homeschool, or into private school, or to switch districts. And that's changed recently. As I said, anyone who's expelled now has to go there for a full year, and I know for a fact that I would not be where I am today if I had to go to Jump Start for two semesters. It changes people. You know, I was only there for two for two weeks, and I could already feel it changing me. And I knew a lot of people who stayed there, and they didn't come out the same. You know, I didn't know the same person after. So, what I wanted to ask you is whether or not we can reevaluate that. I don't think that it's fair to ask kids to have to go to that place and to be subjected to that for a full year. You know, it's not fair of them. There's I know for a fact that there's a lot of kids out there like me who just made a mistake. You know, they did the wrong thing at the wrong time in the wrong place. And Jump Start, it changes your life and not in a good way. You know, it's it's not the place that kids like me need to be. Not only was I afraid of losing myself, but I was afraid of losing my academics. There's no honor systems. There's no, there's nothing. It's just school. And it's not even real school. It's just filling out third-grade worksheets all day. I don't think that they deserve that, and I think that we all need to see that, and see that just because somebody's made a mistake, it doesn't need to change their lives, and in a bad way. So, if you all would consider that, that'd be great.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your concern. Okay. Three minutes, Mr. James Davis. Yes.
My name is James Davis. I'm the President of Greater Covenant Branch NAACP. We had a talk about the redistricting. And St. Tammany is one of the best schools in the state of Louisiana. I think we have 54 schools, something like that. And you got minorities all over this, all over this parish, all over this state. And we would like to see if we can get the minority district back here. That Mr. Albert Smith, he was the, he was the school board for, I think, four terms. And after him, it was past the dog, dog birds. I have nothing against our Mr. Dillon right now. I was his mayor man for eight years where he lived right there. But I'm talking about the school itself. We got all kinds of minority kids go to these schools all over, all over this parish and all over the state. And we would like to see, poor kids would like to see some of their own people in certain areas, you know. So, I would like to see if we can think about having a minority district here like it was before. And whatever you have to do, if we need any kind of help that we can do, we would definitely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lee Barrios.
Superintendent Foles, Lee Barrios, retired teacher from St. Tammany. Superintendent Foles and School Board Members, tonight you'll be voting on the 2012-13 school system budget. I wore my budget pin tonight. It says, "If you think education is expensive, try ignorance." I know that in spite of the overwhelming support of the taxpayers in St. Tammany Parish who have recently approved millages to support our schools, your budget has gotten tighter and tighter, and difficult choices have had to be made. Our governor and our state legislators continue to underfund K through 12 and higher education in this state while moving forward with their efforts to privatize our democratically-controlled public schools, colleges, and universities. And every single one of our St. Tammany legislators supported this destructive legislation. The minimum foundation program, which provides the largest share of funding in the form of per pupil dollars, has not received an increase in four years, but costs continue to rise in St. Tammany, along with our performance scores and our student population. The state continues to add unfunded mandates to the districts that used to be and should be funded by state dollars. Teachers who haven't seen a pay raise from the state in years, and have not even asked for raises from the district, are facing an untested and inequitable new evaluation system that will penalize them for student performance on high-stakes standardized tests over which research has shown they have little control. Our highly unqualified New Yorker, former Teach for America exec, State Superintendent John White, announced today that 5,000 students were awarded vouchers to private and parochial schools. Seventy-four of those vouchers were given to St. Tammany Parish students at a cost of well over a half million dollars to our school system, approximately half of that being the theft of locally-dedicated taxpayer funds, the result of which is a lawsuit against the state which will cost more money. The teachers of these students don't have to be state-certified and won't be evaluated like our teachers will be. According to Superintendent White's new regulations, none of these voucher schools will be held accountable because they don't meet the minimum of 40-student requirement. In a statewide press release today, Superintendent White made a conscious effort to insult and degrade the employees, parents, and students of St. Tammany Parish by quoting a voucher recipient from North Lake Christian School who said, "I've never before picked my child up from school and watched her face light up as she talked about her first day of school." How highly inappropriate and unprofessional for the leader of our state school system who's being paid by the citizens of this state to improve and support our public schools, not to publicly disparage them. I want the citizens of this parish to understand that while our school board members, teachers, and administrators are doing their best to continue to provide the highest-quality education and facilities for our children under difficult circumstances, the state, at the direction of our governor, and with the blessing of our local legislators, are doing everything they can to undermine those efforts. Thank you to the school board members who've taken the lead statewide in standing up for our public schools, and thank you in advance to the administrators, teachers, and employees who are going to be facing a very few difficult years.
All right. Thank you, Lee. Ms. Frances Dunn? Please.
My name is Frances Dunn. I believe you have on your table, on the table tonight, a redistricting plan that will take a district from the east side to the west side of the parish. I know that this plan is to accommodate rapid growth centered around Madisonville area. But I'm here tonight to ask you to consider another plan. A plan that will give assistance to the rapid decline of the educational status of the youth in my area, the West 30s. Ten years ago, this body, former members of this body, did us wrong. You took away our representation on this board. What were we left with? A rapid increase of the education gap between blacks and whites in our areas. You see, a lot of our kids can't read. Cannot read. What else do we have? You took away our voice at the table. In every community, there must be a liaison between the community and the school, and the school board. I'm not here to unseat Mr. Durham. I'm not here to give criticism of Mr. Foles. I'm here just to say, give us back what we deserve. Reconsider what you did. Not some of you all here wondering what was done to us 10 years ago, because our community needs this. We are dying. Most of you all know me. I have been working on my community for years. It's just I retired. I'm chairperson of the West 30s Revitalization Plan. We have in the last four years gone through a year-long plan and a six-month implementation plan. All the planners say that we can do all we can with houses, but unless we do something about the educational status of our kids, we are working in vain. Because in order to give us, bring us out of poverty, we must increase the educational status of our children. Our community is declining. I'm not concerned about the growth. Help us. Also, you know that the last years or so, we have been working on doing some renovation of houses. We're going to change our focus. We're going to focus on education. Because as I say, we believe, as the lady just said, if you think education is expensive, try ignorance. It's costing us. It's costing us our lives. You know, there's a saying saying that we need to stop the prison, the school, the high school, the prison pipeline. We don't have that. We got grade school to prison. Our kids are not making it to high school. From grade school, they're going to prison. What's left for us? We love our community, and we want to see every child. You know, I walk the streets and I ask kids, "What you want to be?" You know what they tell me? "I don't know. Every child should have a dream. Every child should have something in mind that they want to do." Why they don't have this? Because they know in order to achieve some of the things they want to do, they must be able to read. You know, I want to say also that Mr. Foles, Mr. Brady, and Ms. Araby have been very supportive of me in all of my projects, and I thank them for that. We are going to start the West 30s Committee, a reading program in October. That was brought to us by a member of the Canal Street Presbyterian Church. It's called STAR Program, whereby we're going to concentrate on doing one-on-one mentoring with second and third graders. Because as you educators, educators know, that if you get a child to read by grade three, he's on the way to success. We're going to do this because we're serious about what we need to do. And we're asking you to assist us, because we know that the Justice Department believes that the priority of redistricting should be in the best interests of the electorate and the community, and not on the incumbents or on partisan influence. Do the right thing. For right now, is the right time to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Mr. Mark Traynor?
Good evening.
My name is Mark Traynor. I am a certified school psychologist, living in St. Tammany Parish. I retired from the school, the Jefferson Parish School System after working nearly 30 years. During my tenure in Jefferson Parish, I was involved in a lot of school cover-ups. It was though we were not going to tell the public, the citizens, what was going on in the schools, and I have to admit that I was a part of that. I live in St. Tammany now, but I'm working full-time as a writer and also as an advocate. I'm also offering my services to everyone in the community free. I'd be glad to advocate for any child. I get, I get my retirement now. That'll be my salary. I would like to know what happened on the campus at Covington High School on August 17th. That's why I'm here tonight. Now, I don't need to know the names, but I think the public in St. Tammany Parish has- has the right to know what happened in that bathroom. Secondly, I would like to know, 'cause there's been nothing in the news about it, was any kind of weapon involved in this incident? And thirdly, was the victim attacked from behind, or was he given a chance to defend himself? Has the Saint Tammany Parish School System ever considered the idea of putting cameras up like you have in this building and your classrooms? That way, we know the teachers are teaching and kids are learning and behaving themselves and doing what they need to do. I also think that monitors should be posted outside of the bathrooms, monitoring the number of people going in so that we don't have incidents like this again. Okay? I wanna commend the Saint Tammany Parish School System because you guys have historically done a wonderful job scholastically, and I haven't heard a lot about you guys behaviorally. Okay? And I will be addressing school board meetings throughout the state of Louisiana. As a result of this criminal act that took place on August the seventeenth, has there been any unusual racial, racial tensions at any of the schools in the parish? I think that the citizens have a right to know if they're sending their kids to safe schools. Okay. Also, were any additional students arrested? Was it just one student who was arrested and charged with attempted second-degree murder? Were there any follow-ups of kids bringing weapons on campus? Were there any hints of a riot? Are we sending our children every day to safe schools? Okay? We need to know this. Have you guys stepped up your security measures at the schools to make sure that this never happens? Not just at Covington High School, but that it doesn't happen at any other school in the parish? And I know historically, from working in Jefferson Parish, that the most dangerous schools that I worked in were the middle schools, not the high schools, because like this young lady mentioned previously, most of the kids, the really kids with the behavior problems, never made it to high school. They either went to jail or they dropped out because they got too old. Also, what has the school system, and I can tell you, this is kind of a catch-22 question because I would like to know what the school system has done to make the public feel safer about sending their kids to school. And the last thing that I wanna bring up, because I know my time is out, is I would like to know the condition of the child who was critically injured. This, this kind of information needs to be released to the public. Is he still in critical condition? Is he home? Is he gonna make a full recovery? God bless you guys. God bless the work that you guys do, and I'll be keeping an eye on everybody.
All right.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, agenda items. Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held August ninth, twenty twelve.
Moved.
Moved, Dan. Second questions by the board? Comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So ordered. Appropriate retirement resolutions on the following certificated personnel subsequent to August ninth, twenty twelve. I'll read them all for the motion. Beth C. Bowles, Abney Early Childhood Center, twenty-four point one-one years, eleven point nine-one years, Saint Tammany. Rhonda G. Pleasure, Covington Elementary, twenty-two point nine-one years, Saint Tammany. Vicki L. Antrana, Harrison Curriculum Center, thirty-one point two-two years, sixteen point seven-two years, Saint Tammany. Neil R. Guidry, Harrison Curriculum Center, thirty-three point oh-nine years, twenty-seven point oh-nine years, Saint Tammany. Dale A. Stewart, Harrison Curriculum Center, thirty-one point six-eight years, three point six-eight years, Saint Tammany. Moved in second. Questions by the board? Comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So ordered. Appropriate retirement resolutions on the following non-certificated personnel subsequent to August ninth, twenty twelve. Janelle C. Davis, Central Office, twenty-two point oh-one years, Saint Tammany. David Ducree, Manneville High School, thirty-five point two-five years, thirty-three point one-seven years, Saint Tammany. Deidre W. Helmer, Manneville Junior High, twenty point four-three years, Saint Tammany. Anthony K. Robbins, Slido Maintenance Department, thirty-three point oh-five years, Saint Tammany. Sandra L. Alman, Transportation Center, thirty-one point six-eight years, twenty-three point six-eight years, Saint Tammany. Lee T. Jones, Transportation Center, twenty point three-five years, Saint Tammany. Moved.
Second.
In second, questions by the board? Comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So ordered. Approval of the recommendations from the committee as a whole meeting held August sixteenth, twenty twelve. Ms. Heintz.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. The Committee on Human Resources and Education met on August sixteenth and has the following recommendation. Recommends approval of the seclusion restraint procedures under Louisiana Revised Statutes seventeen colon four-one-six point two-one, Act three twenty-eight of two thousand and eleven, and Louisiana Bulletin seventeen oh-six revised two thousand and twelve.
Motion. Second.
Second.
Questions by the board? Comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So ordered. Thank you, Ms. Heintz. Approval of the recommendations from the committee as a whole meeting held September sixth, twenty twelve. Mr. Alfred.
Thank you, Mr. Luke, and I would like to thank Mr. Dearman for chairing that meeting for me due to I had a board of directors meeting in Marksville I couldn't attend. So, but thank you, Mr. Dearman. And the, the committee did meet on September sixteenth, two thousand and twelve and has the following recommendations. First, recommends adopting a resolution to accept redistricting plan five, which said plan meets all requisites of state and federal law and which maintains fifteen single-member districts as the Saint Tammany Parish School Board Redistricting Plan for the School Board Election Districts. To become effective upon receiving preclearance from the United States Department of Justice, further, as such, as plan, such plans shall be utilized for the next regular scheduled school board election in two thousand and fourteen and which shall become effective for all purposes on January one, two thousand and fifteen.
Moved in second. Questions from the board? Comments from the public?
Mr. Luke?
Oh, yes, Mr. Alfred.
Thank you. Let me see how I wanna start with this. Mr. Blair was, did a very good job with this. We met with Mr. Blair from the east end of the parish and also on the west end of the parish, and we kinda sat down and kinda went through these maps and tried to go through it and, and, and tried to work a plan together. The members on the east side of the parish sat down and we was going through the plans and we was trying to make sure at, at one part of time that all the board members had a district, their district, and how to make sure that all fifteen board members have a, was able to maintain their school district. And so, the east side of the parish, we came up with a plan that we sat down and did that, which was plan number two. And we tried to make sure that all the constituents on the east side, on the east side of district had their districts, maintained their districts. We all kinda was in agreement of what we had done, that we would not affect anybody had to run against anybody. Back in two thousand and two, John had to run against Mr. Broome back then, and we were saying we didn't want that to happen again on the east end of the parish. Then, there was another plan that came into play that the east end of the parish, I mean the west end of the parish, had put in a, planning on play that would eliminate Mr. Pancks District and Mr. Womack's District, and that was one of the other plans, and then we would lose a, a, a district on this end. We would have those two particular board members pitied to run against each other. So, then Mrs. Mullitt came up with a plan, which is plan five, which is on the agenda tonight, which would dissolve, have Mr. John Lamarck running against Mrs. Mullitt with that plan. And so, when they, when plan five came up and everybody was starting to saying, "Yeah, let's go with plan five," we could move a district from the east end of the parish to the west end of the parish. So, back in two thousand and two, when we did it the last time, the minority district on the west side of the parish, Mr. Smith's old district, um, since we were moving a district from the east end of the parish to the west end of the parish, there was an opportunity with a new district on the west end of the parish to have a larger percentage of minorities in that particular district. And so, that plan, uh, I asked Mr. Blair to kinda put up the plan together since if we're gonna lose a, a district on the east end of the parish, the Justice Department would, I would, would be quite sure that the minorities on the west end of the parish would have an opportunity, not to have a minority district, but to have a higher increase of minorities that would give them a chance to, to have an opportunity, just an opportunity, not having a majority district, but have an opportunity with a larger percentage of minorities in their district, which was Mr. Smith's old district. And so, he came up with the, that was plan six, and I wasn't here last week, and I, I hate, I had a board meeting with the State Board of Education, so that means Louisiana School Board Association, excuse me, and I had to attend that meeting because I was, I'm on the board of directors with that. And so, I, I wasn't able to be able to have a very good discussion with the board members about why the plan, we need to talk about the plan. And so, it's on the agenda tonight, and with it being on the agenda tonight, I, I wanted to table it tonight, to bring it back to committee so that we could discuss it further. And the reason for that is that, um, we don't have to rush into this. We have until December to get this completely done because it's not in the, it won't go into effect until, uh, two thousand and fourteen, uh, so we have time. So, we don't have things just to rush it to this. And when we was meeting with Mr. Blair, he was just telling us, "Hey, you, we got time to work on this here. We let everybody have a good discussion because we don't want this to go to the Justice Department." And I'm, I'm quite sure, uh, some of the, the members of the, of the Covington area would probably want this to go to Justice Department if we don't have a, if there is gonna be another district over on the west end of the parish. But if, if we would've gone with plan two, that wouldn't have had any additional district on the west end of the parish. But since we, we're not going with plan two by what was passed at the, at the other board meeting, that, that plan five would add an additional district to the west end of the parish. With adding an additional district, district to the west end of the parish, then there's an opportunity for it to be a minority, as, as additional minorities in that particular district by drawing the maps that, at this particular time, because every ten years is when you draw the maps, and it takes ten years before this to happen. And so, I moved to table this, go, go back to a committee meeting so we can have some further discussions and start voting on it tonight. So, I moved to table.
Second. Well, we already have a motion on the floor, don't we? So, we have to do something with this first before we do the table. Oh, vote on table first, okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second now for the tabling. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll have to raise your hand there to take a vote in, in favor of, uh, tabling. Raise your hand, please. Four, five. Okay. Those opposed? Four, five, six. Only six, is that right? Six, that's only eleven. Okay, roll call vote, please, yeah. Mr. Petuzak is a simple majority to table?
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Heintz?
Mr. Pancks.
Mr. Durman?
No.
Mr. Luke?
No.
Mr. Harold?
No.
Mrs. Tipton?
Nay.
Mr. Jeter?
No.
Mrs. Sealy?
Four.
Mrs. Mullitt?
No.
Mr. Betancourt?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Womack?
Four.
Mr. Pancks?
Four.
Mr. Lamarck?
Four.
Mr. Alfred?
Four.
Mrs. Bellisario?
Nay.
Eight nays. Six yays. One absent.
Okay, so we had eight nays and six yes. Motion fails. To table it. Okay, so now we'll go back to the motion that was on the, on the floor saying that redistricting plan five be accepted, and, uh, let's do the roll call again, please, for that also, Carol. Go back to the motion. Comments from the board?
Comments from the board?
All right. Wanna say something again? Yes.
Yes, since that one failed, then I would like to make a substitute motion instead of having redistricting plan five in place, I would like to change to redistricting plan six.
That plan was defeated. Right. Committee recommended five, defeated six. Right. Correct.
In order to do this, you would have to open the agenda, which of course would require unanimous vote.
Right.
Say that again, Mr. Petuzak?
What's on the agenda tonight is plan five.
All right. Nothing else? In order for you to go off the agenda to go...
There was three plans. The one that's on the agenda tonight is that plan.
That was a committee...
That was a motion, that was, that came out of committee. So, you're saying to me that you cannot change, you can't, you couldn't make a motion to change one of the plans to another plan?
You can.
I wanna make sure parliamentary procedure on this.
You can, but you have to have unanimous vote, okay, and an explanation as to why you're going off the agenda.
So, Mr. Luke, do we need to open the agenda?
Well, you can ask for it to be opened, it takes a unanimous vote to open it.
Well, so do, so move.
Okay, a move in a second to open the agenda to add that plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so it's not unanimous, so we can't open the agenda.
Uh, do a roll call vote, please, so we can...
Okay, roll call, please, Carol.
Mr. Hanigan? Mrs. Heintz? Mr. Durman?
Nay.
Mr. Harold?
No.
Mrs. Tipton? Mr. Jeter?
Yes.
Mrs. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullitt?
Nay.
Mr. Betancourt?
No.
Mr. Womack? Mr. Pancks?
Yes. I'm gonna say yes. Sorry, I have that brain wrong.
Mr. Lamarck?
Yes.
Mr. Alfred?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellisario?
No.
Seven, 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 eh?
All right, vote seven.
It has to be unanimous.
It's seven, seven.
Yeah. Okay, so we do, cannot open the agenda since it wasn't unanimous.
What was the count? It was seven, seven, right?
Eight, seven, five votes. It's not a majority, though, it's just unanimous. Every, all fourteen of us would have to say yes and no to open the agenda. Well, I've, I've asked for, for any other comments from the, questions from the public. Yeah. That's right. Comments from the public?
So, Harold, what's the state law?
That's, that is the state law. If it's not on the agenda, the notice, you have to have unanimous decision by the body, and then you have to explain why you're going off agenda.
And, and what's a unanimous, what is unanimous? Is it eight, seven?
In this case, it'd be fourteen, zero. It's zero, it's unanimous. Everybody has to vote for it.
Everybody has to vote for it. That's ridiculous.
Well, that's state law. Maybe ridiculous, but it's state law.
A lot of ridiculous state laws.
Okay, any other comments from the board? Mr. Durman?
Mr. Cap, if, if I could ask you to step to the microphone, please, sir.
Yes, sir, the whole process, you have to meet, the United States Constitution comes first, that's one person, one vote. That means all the districts have to be as equal, as practicable. What we look at is getting every district within a plus or minus 5% of the ideal. And the ideal is you take the total parish population, you divide it by the number of board members, that's your ideal, and you can go five over, five under, no more. The Supreme Court, many years ago, recognized that plus or minus 5%. They never made it absolutely clear that that was a safe harbor, but it was a pretty safe harbor. In the last 10 years, there's been a couple lower court cases out of Georgia that the court didn't accept the 5%. Like I said, you could have gotten it easier, closer, you could have got it closer to zero, a deviation. So, that's the first hurdle. The second hurdle, of course, is the Voting Rights Act, that's federal law. And in the Voting Rights Act, minorities, districts, minorities are protected, you can't discriminate against them, obviously. And if you have, you can't retrogress, is number one, and retrogression means is you can't go less than you had before, but you have to reach, meet the threshold of over the 50% to set that in place. If you don't have the minority population there, then you're not required to do that. A perfect example is what happened in New Orleans in the last 10 years over Katrina. It changed. The population changed, the demographics changed, and you had to deal with that. And of course, after you get through the federal law, then you go to state law, and there are certain requirements on the state law, including the state reiterates that one person, one vote issue. And then they talk about, you can only split precincts within a school board. We didn't have to do that here. You have to use whole precincts if it's possible. If it's impossible to meet that criteria, then you can split limited number of precincts. The precincts are built by the parish governing authority, so you don't have, you have to live with those building blocks. And this parish is large enough with a population with enough of the building blocks that you can meet that criteria.
And in your professional opinion, the Plan Five that's on our agenda to vote on tonight meets all of those requirements?
Yes, sir, it does. In my opinion, it meets all of them.
Okay.
True does as well.
Thank you. And I'd also like to thank Ms. Robin Mullet for her extensive efforts in trying to work out a plan, I think that really, for the first time in many years, you know, aligns our school board districts as much as possible with the school, the school learning community they represent. And I think it's, you know, she actually sacrificed her own district in order to accomplish this, the growth factor that took place in the western side of the parish. Hey, it's not easy, nobody likes it, but that's the, that's the reality of what we deal with. We're elected to represent the people, not to be just sitting there on a board. So do our job.
I would like to ask a question, Mr. Luke.
All right, Ms. Mullet, you had a question? No. Ms. Sealy?
Just a point of clarification. Any plan that we came up with, we really took in the best interest of our fellow board members the best way we could. On each one, in the beginning, I'll have to back up, in District Eight, that was almost the perfect district. However, when I looked at the plans, and I know we all had the opportunity to come forth and so forth, and I appreciate that and all the hard work you all have put in, it seems like, this district seems like it's the most affected. If it's not one end of the district that's affected, it's the other end. So, I know a lot of questions had come forth on why I had abstained from voting last week. I felt because we had three board members missing, and the fact that, that I was hearing from constituents at both ends, I felt that we just needed a little more conversation, explanations, and looking into these areas a little more, and especially since I'm hearing more and more from the public now, I believe, and I'm just expressing my thoughts now, that as a board, we really should look further into it. Is there a possibility that Plan Five can be tweaked a little bit? I mean, if we vote, if we vote this in tonight, that's not our final plan, is it?
Yes, it is.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
When I sat down and looked at all the plans, and looked at the needs of this whole parish, I looked at everyone equally, I looked at all districts equally, and I looked at the needs of both the east and the west, and each one of our districts. I saw the need for another represent, for representation on the side with the most growth. Was I right on that, Mr. Kep?
Right.
Yes, ma'am, the growth in this parish in the last 10 years has been more on the southwest side of the parish.
Okay. So I did meet that.
Yes.
I also looked at the needs, I felt that my constituents asked me to look at, and that was to put them in their learning communities, and that's what I did. I had no other agenda other than doing what my constituents, and I think, wanted, and to meet the needs because of the census, to redistrict. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please.
Under the current plan that we're voting on tonight, for District Three, what is the minority percentage in that district?
16.4%. 16.5%. 15.5. I can't read, can't see my glasses.
15, right?
Yes, sir, 15.5, that is correct.
And under Plan Six, what was the percentage?
In District Three?
Yes.
Plan Six was 3.2.
The minority district, that's where Three was moved over. Which one on the west end had the highest percentage of minorities? Which district in Plan Six?
Well, I'll read them to you, but District Number One had 4%, Two had 5%, Three had 3%, Four had 3%, Five had 4%, Six had 3%, Seven had 22%, Eight had 4%, Nine had 25%, Ten had 9, Eleven had 13, Twelve had 15, Thirteen had 10, Fourteen, yours had 48, and Fifteen had 9.
It was, I just forgot, it was Nine that we moved over to, and that's why Nine had it, which encompassed old District Number Three. Got it. My bad. So Nine had the 25%.
Under Plan Six, District Nine is, is, one of the maps in this, still in the Slide L area.
Right.
Yes, sir.
But Nine, when it was moved over in the district, in Plan Six, it had the 25%, and Mr. Jeter's district had 22%. Correct?
District Nine is in Slide L, in, it's Plan Six. Well, it's in, it's in Pearl River. North Slide L, Pearl River.
Nine is the district that, Robbins District, right?
Right, unless my map is wrong.
Robbins District is the district that moved over to the west side of the parish, which, which was the new district on the west side of the parish, which we talked about to increase the percentage to 25%.
I'm sorry, you are correct. They got the wrong map on the front. District Nine, yes, is on the northwest side of the parish, and District Nine's minority population in that plan...
Was 25%.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Jeter's district, which was Seven, was 22%.
Yeah.
So we was trying to make a, the district, just, we're gonna make this in the records for the guys that's gonna go to the United States Department of Justice, so they have to be in the record, that District Nine, which on the west end was 20, would be 25%, correct?
That is correct. District Nine is 25% minority.
And that's, and that's, and that's not a majority. What consists of a majority district?
More than 50%.
Okay, so it was, it was just, it was just enhanced as an opportunity to get to 20, 25% from a 15%, correct?
Well, it increased it to 25, I don't know what you mean by opportunity. Supreme Court talks...
It was 15%.
Yes, sir.
And we increased it to 25% to give an opportunity for a larger majority, minority for that particular district. That's, that's what I was trying to make sure. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kep. Any other comments? Thoughts?
I'm not sure I want to do this, say this, but I guess I will. Harry, I understand the new state law is that in order to open the agenda, it has to be 100% participation, but one of the greatest arguments, in my opinion, for all of us being willing to open up the agenda is the fact that there were a number of board members that were absent for good reasons, that didn't have the opportunity to be involved in the discussion of this. One of the greatest strengths that I've seen since I've been back on this board, and one of the things I've enjoyed the most, is the cohesiveness that exists with this board that simply didn't exist the first term I served in office. I would think that it would be in the best interest of all of us to maintain that cohesiveness by having open, honest, frank discussion. I don't understand, I fail to see, maybe someone can enlighten me, what there is that would be threatening to open the agenda for us to talk about this for the benefit of those board members that didn't have a voice a week ago. Now, that's just my thoughts, and maybe I'm off base on this, but again, you know, I'd like to, like to keep that cohesiveness, and I can't help but see how that could be threatened to some degree after tonight, because there are those that feel like they didn't have a voice. So, that's just my opinion.
Mr. Betancourt?
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Well, if my board, fellow board members will remember, sometime early in the summer, I had asked that we extend this procedure to give us all more time, to give the public time for input. We had very little input from the public, not even enough to say public, or two or three emails or something like that. So there was added time, and a few other plans, you know, came forth. So I don't think, as a board, we're trying to shut anybody out. We've extended this at some point in time, we need to just do it and move on. But we did extend it from the summer to give everybody some more time to discuss this and put forth different plans and scenarios. So I just wanted to point that out. And then as far as race, I think our parish, I don't know that we have a racial problem here. Mr. Alfred is living, sitting proof, he's not a minority, a majority district, and he's been on this board, I think, longer than anybody. The president of our union, Ms. Elsie Bergholder, and I think we have probably more whatever white Americans working for our school system than we do minorities. So I don't think we have a racial problem in St. Tammany Parish, and we certainly don't want one. Thank you.
All right, anyone? Mr. Harold? Yes, so just, let's see, well, I gotta ask comments from the public, let's say that. Mr. Alfred, let me ask you one question. Did Plan Six have any board members running against each other?
Did Plan Six? Yes, they did.
Okay, thank you.
They had board members, just like on the east side of the parish, had board members running against each other, the west side had board members running against each other.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the public? Mr. Davis?
As what Mr. Councilman District Ten said a few minutes ago, a lot of the public didn't know that this redistricting was going on. And I'm saying, like the young lady said a while ago, this thing don't go into effect until 2014. What's the hurry? Now, I've heard councilmen going to run against each other, so I mean, I understand your job, but who, it doesn't matter if you run against each other or not, the constituents pick whoever they want. The best interest is for the children. And if tweak it, or whatever you do, all this type of stuff, you should try to do the very best for the 15, 15 district, for the children. That's what it should be for. I know Afro-American is only about 12 or 13% in this parish, and we grew a lot of people after Katrina. But just the major concern is, like Ms. Dunn said, is our children, and we don't want, we don't want, I mean, if you have to run against each other, that's not the problem. If you get elected, all well and good, I mean, you're not making this decision to see who gonna run against each other. We're supposed to be making the decision for the best interest of the children, for minorities, and everybody. And she said, we don't have a racial problem, but we do have incidents. I get a lot of calls from a lot of schools. We do have incidents, and they be handling pretty well. But we do have problems, more than you haven't seen them, but we see them. But the fact is that the whole thing is for the children. We don't want anybody to run against each other, but still, the whole thing is for the children. Best interest, if you have to tweak it, or whatever you have to do to try to make Number Five or Number Six the best, take the time to do it. This thing don't go into effect until 2014, and you can't vote on it 2015, so what's the hurry? You are supposed to be elected by the people of this St. Tammany Parish. You're supposed to serve them. And the main thing is for our children, for our children. Thank you.
Yes, and Mr. Davis, we have to turn this in to the federal government, Justice Department. That's why we have to turn that in now, because they take quite a while before they look it all over and determine and send it back to us and tell us it's okay. So we have to have this done by December.
By December?
We have to have it turned in to them so that they... So, I mean, I understand your job, but who, it doesn't matter if you run against each other or not, the, the constituents pick whoever they want. The best interest is for the children. And, and if tweak it, or whatever you do, all this type of stuff, you should try to do the very best for the fifteen, fifteen district, for the children. That's what it should be for. I know Afro-American is only about twelve or thirteen percent in this parish, and we grew a lot of people after Katrina. But just the major concern is, like Ms. Dunn said, is our children, and we don't want, we don't want, I mean, if you have to run against each other, that's not the problem. It's, if you get elected, all will and good. I mean, you're not making this decision to see who going to run against each other. We're supposed to be making the decision for the best interest of the children, for minorities, and everybody. And, and she said, we don't have a racial problem, but we do have incidents. I get a lot of calls from a lot of schools. We do have incidents, and they be handling them pretty well. But we do have problems, more than you haven't seen them, but we see them. But the fact is that the whole thing is for the children. We don't want anybody to run against each other, but still, the whole thing is for the children. The best interest, if you have to tweak it, or whatever you have to do to try to make Number Five or Number Six the best, take the time to do it. This thing don't go into effect to 2014, and, and you can't vote on it 2015, so what's the hurry? You are supposed to be elected by the people of this St. Tammany Parish. You're supposed to serve them. And we, the main thing is for our children, for our children. Thank you.
Yes, and Mr. Davis?
We have to turn this in to the federal government, Justice Department. That's why we have to turn that in now, because they take quite a while before they look it all over and determine and send it back to us and tell us it's okay. So we have to have this done by December.
By December?
We, we have to have it turned in to them so that they can look it over and make sure it's okay.
Okay, well, someone said...
I know it's 2014 is when it goes in next time we have elections, but we still have to give it to them because the Justice Department takes, takes a time with it and, you know, just drags it out.
Okay, so you have it to December.
Yeah.
This is September 12, September 13. If, if all you have to do is tweak Number Five to make it better, that shouldn't take ninety days to do. I mean, whatever, I hope you do the best for the children.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to vote? All in favor, well, we'll do a roll call vote, please, Carol.
Mr. Henigan is absent. Mrs. Heinz?
Voting yes for the resolution.
Mr. Darman?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs., Mr. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Tipton?
Yes.
Mr. Jeter?
Yes.
Mrs. Sealy? Mrs. Mullet?
Yes.
Mr. Betancourt?
Yes.
Mr. Womack?
No.
Mr. Pancks?
No.
Mr. Lamarck?
No.
Mr. Alfred?
No.
Mrs. Bellisario?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Eight yays, nine, one, two.
Next on the, we had a recommendation to accept the superintendent's proposed budget for fiscal year 2012 and 2013, and I so move.
Moved in second. Questions from the board? Comments from the public? All in favor? Opposed, abstained, so ordered.
Mr. Luke, that concludes the committee as a whole meeting.
Yes, sir, thank you. Announcements by the President. A committee as a whole meeting for human resources education will be held on Thursday, September 20th at 7:00 p.m. School board member training, in accordance with Act 705, will be provided at the committee as a whole meeting. Board members will receive one hour of credit. School board members are required to receive six hours of continuing education in each calendar year of their term in office. The Louisiana Board of Ethics also requires board members to complete one hour of ethics training each calendar year, and training is available online at the Louisiana Board of Ethics. If you have completed your ethics training, please submit a copy of your certification of completion to the superintendent's office. We would like to thank students and teachers from several of our schools for the lively entertainment at reception before tonight's meeting. Violin soloist Bethany Prince from Manville High School, accompanied by tap teacher Leslie Loyacano. Cajun accordion soloist Clifton Cooper from Manville Junior High. Theater students from Covington High School performing a scene from the play What Fire Can Never Burn, directed by their tap teacher Gary Mendoza. No other comments? Meeting adjourned.